Which is in preparation for our final meeting in August of August the 15th. It is an opportunity for us to look over the agenda and ask questions, be briefed on specific items that there might be questions about. But first, we have a presentation by Cody Burnett and Chris Williams on the Bill Grant, an update on where we are, options that need to be considered, and kind of a, just a good overview. So, Chris, are you and Cody?
Yeah.
I'm Susha.
You're gonna sit back. All right, all right, that's fine. All right, Chris, the floor is all yours.
All right, so everybody knows where we're at and what to go through. We kind of give you all where we've been at since we had the bids come in hot and kind of lay out different options and give you kind of what we figured out as the path forward and see if everybody's on board with that and kind of know everything. So current, let's go over where we're at. Your N.K.S. Brothers bid came in at $33 million, total's $41 million, so that leaves us a gap of $19 million local as far as that goes. Last meeting, we rejected the bids and so now we're in the process of trying to figure out how do we go forward. As part of that, we want to kind of like, how did we get here? What are our contributing factors of that hole that we've got to fill or try to figure out how we attack that? So contributing factors, COVID, inflation, you know, project started right before we were paying the global pandemic, prices and everything and that, and then we've had record inflation after it, so that is an issue. Scope of the project, just the sheer size of it, with how big the project is, there's fewer contractors that can bond that amount of work, and so then you have less competition on that one. And then also, there's a specialty portion of this work with electrical and different things on there, so especially working in the size. Another issue is our contract time. So because of the pandemic and design issues and craters on those, we're letting out that project right at the end of what your grant time was, so we had a little over, a little under 18 months to do the construction on there. And so with the amount of work and that compressed timeline, we had higher prices as well for that. And then the last big kind of phase of that is constructability of the design. So how it's currently set up is M.D.O. owns the road, and with that along comes there, you can't put any utilities under, inside the back of curve to back of curve. So all the utilities that we had designed, drainage, water, sewer, everything's in the back of the right way as far as that goes. On top of that, you think about, you have all your existing utilities there, so you have everything that's existing and everything that proposed is time to try to go in that area on that one. So that's an issue, is just the phasing of that. One example is the electrical distribution. Holes have to be there until we get the finished duck bank put in. Duck bank can't go in until you get the sewer in and drainage in on that. So you've got things that you've got to keep hot while you're still doing construction as well on that. So with that being said, trying to get approach going forward, so request additional time. With what we have, there's no way to get it constructed in the amount of time that we have left on the grant. We've had discussions with federal highways, both at the local level and at the national level, trying to work both angles as far as that goes. Verbally, they said they're okay with this, but we've still got to go through all the paperwork that's along with that, so it's just going to be a lift to try to get those, the time amount change. Provide scope. So everything's set up on the grant agreement, so your store's stopped, bought, everything's filled out. So there are some things that we can try to change that we've had discussions on. One of them's electrical. So we're looking at the distribution lines, we were showing it going underground, we're talking about doing, trying to go above ground on the transmission holes up high. So the whole reason for the grant is trying to clean up the view shed. When you go down there now, it's just spaghetti noodles and lines everywhere, you're trying to figure out how to clean that up. So this would be a way to try to get the intent of the grant run cheaper, cheaper way.
So go up and on one side of the road?
Right. So right now, you've got on both sides, everything's going everywhere with all the different stuff, just, you know, as you go over the years and things get out, also everything will be on one side up higher, kind of how do you?
See that in a lot of places, yeah.
Right, so just trying to clean it up. But the grant agreement right now shows it's going underground for a portion of it, so trying to work with federal highways to see what kind of room we have to work on as far as that goes.
So on the end of a going around, you just go to the outside?
Well, and there might be, there's a bunch of stuff, I'm giving you both spectrums on it, but one of them is, is you could go above ground, have everything up high, but then you would hop down at your intersections where your distribution, so your crossings would be underground. So pretty much everything will be on that side, and then you'd hop under it and go over at each intersection. That's one option.
Which way, call signal would it come in?
The, we're thinking three to four million on that one, probably about two to three as far as materials and labor and that type of thing. The other million is what I was talking about. The contractors from what I talked about, they had about $800,000 because they think they're going to have to move the distribution temporarily out of the way, build what they need to build to move it back. So that's why I'm getting that other million wrong, but these are, yeah, it's hard with how much is going on to put a dollar figure to it, but that's what we're thinking on that. So the other one is kind of redesigning the design and trying to help with the constructability, and so the potential of taking over 182, the mayor's got a line, I don't remember in her, her agenda portion to discuss that or go over it. So I've got a slide to talk about that. And then also, the other thing with that redesign is the Neil Schaefer review contract is also, is a board item this been around. What that's bringing home is having Neil Schaefer help to do a constructability review. We have them on board already for the construction engineering inspection portion of the project. So this gives us another set of engineers that are very well versed in the construction side of it. The guy that we have at Neil Schaefer finished up a contract that's very similar to this at downtown Jackson, so knowing the kind of pitfalls of working in an urban environment with this type of contract, he'll be able to help on that portion of it.
This week, us taking over one of, you're talking about the state seeding 182 to us?
Yes.
And generally, cities don't do that. They go the other way, trying to get portions highway back on state maintenance. We'd be taking it off. So we forever, we're allowed to maintain this on it.
We will, and so I'll show you the reason.
It's jointed concrete down there too, that's something.
And it is, and that's one, it's jointed concrete right now.
And those tracks are going to fish, we're going, into perpetuity, we'll be dealing with that and not M.D.O.
And on that side of it, if we go out, and let me, we'll swap over here and kind of have a discussion because it kind of goes hand in hand with what we're talking about. So these are the existing plans, so I kind of wanted to show y'all what we've got going on, to give you an idea of why. As you do, we'd have to be the ones that overlay it, and so what we're doing with this. So your colored items to here, these are all your proposed, proposed utilities. And then all your lines that run through here existing, as well as all those dark lines behind that, those are all existing. This is intersection of Montgomery and 182, of course, on that one. So you see how much is going on that you've got spot, and the other thing that's not shown here is there's a brick wall that's running along here as well. So you've got everything going on, and you're trying to put all of this in new while you got there. If you look up under the road, because it was M.D.O.'s road all these years, they didn't allow any utilities to get to go through there, so there's nothing up onto the existing pavement at all. So if we take over the road and we go out into a kind of similar what we've done here and put our water out there, then that way you'd be able to build your new utilities while your other ones are in the back of the curve, and then that way you have a whole new system, be able to swap over, and it takes out that phasing issue that you have with the contract.
What you're saying also, if M.D.O. sees that to us, we don't have to deal with them on the road.
You don't have to deal with them on the road. Now, they, there's still the constraints that you have, but one issue on that is a portion farther down. So right now-
Where would, where would, what territory would, what road would they be seeing?
So what we're talking about is just the portion of the, so a long street to Old West Point would be the piece that we're, that we would take over. So the footprint of this project is-
So 182 would end max meet market, which you're saying?
Right.
And it would take back up at 182?
Maintenance would be ours.
Have they, did they express their opinion on that?
They're okay with it. We've had verbal discussions going back and forth, and they were all right with it. Because that was one thing, is M.D.O. picks logical terminology, so you know, you can't just pick apart on that side of it, and so trying to say like, is it even an option? Or would they want you to take city limits to city limits or something along those lines? And they, they said they were fine with this, that we've had it so far on that. And the concrete joint issue as far as that goes, if you do hop out in the road with your utilities, the works that we've got to do there, then the pieces that you're going back with, you'll be going back with asphalt. So if you pick the lane that you come through with the water side of it, what you go back with would be asphalt. So the concrete joints wouldn't be back on those pieces. And we would have to be, we really would have to think about how you go about that so that you don't have one tire riding over concrete and the other one asphalt, so we'd have to look at how, where the length hits versus our construction work on there. But that is, that's an item to watch.
Because that's 1935 concrete that's, the properties weren't as good nine, eighty, ninety years ago as they are now for concrete.
Well, it's been up this long.
I'm talking about the expansive, the expansive contraction problem. Because you see slip form, slip, slip form concrete now, which means we must, concrete must be better than it used to be about the expansive contraction, or are we still be putting joints, you'd see joints on, on new concrete, I don't see many, but you've seen them.
Well, the 82, what they did there comparative, that they didn't have the technology was, so you have dials that go across, and so then you transfer your weight across them. So it's a new technology, but it is, how you built it in the 30s-
35 versus that.
-is a little different than you do now, and we also have heavier trucks and everything else, so it is a different animal. But if we go this route, we do need to plan on how it's going to ride in those type of lanes and how to take that into consideration.
Okay, Chris, Mike's going to try to leave here soon, so if we could just go ahead and go through the presentation.
That's it. So on that one, so I've covered everything, tried to boil it down. That's, you know, a five minute deal, and that's the construction documents for it. So there's a lot of moving parts, and that doesn't include the grant agreements and everything else, paperwork wise.
Do you know what kind of cost reduction we're looking at, we take, do these things that you're describing?
No, it'll be a hard number because we don't know as far as additional funding goes, what we've got to go on there, so really, it's going to be an iterative process if we get additional funding and what we can go as far as that goes. Like I said, probably three to four on that one. The contractor said that there's other items that we can do as far as constructability, about three to four on that one. So, you know, it adds up quickly, but then also, figuring in like it's going to take us a while to redesign, go out, there's going to be fixes of course on that one. So to tell you the truth, we're going to have to dig into it on the redesign and see what additional funding we have and try to change all this to get inside of budget.
There's also some potential for us to get additional funding, just like the additional time. We don't have any confirmation on us getting it. So that is part of, part of what we're working our way through, and we'll, we'll keep our fingers crossed. But right now, it's either adjust this this way and use our ARPA money and allow us to put it in the street, and, which is, I think, long-term better for us. I hate that we necessarily would have to take that section of road, but when you look at the upside, I think it outweighs the downside of it over the long haul, but-
And that is, one thing to cover is the ARPA funds. If the street is your street, then that makes the utility project be able to move forward with that.
Yes.
But next time we overlay this, our-
Well, that's true.
Or not, some future boards.
And an overlay, in 10 years, eight to 10 years, let's say, is about, well, right now, it's about $400,000. So in the scheme of planning for things, I think, I still think your trade-off is to our benefit as it relates to us being able to do anything to make this work.
We will be bucking the trend, because I know every town I've known so far jumped through every hoop that was possibly jumped through to get, to get M.D.O. to take some highways back on the highway system. When they abandoned, when they built bypasses and abandoned the main routes through town, a lot of places in it.
Well, Louisville Street used to be highway 25th.
We worked, worked, and then they're, they're working to get a highway put back on the highway system. You probably know what it's like, but it is, I mean, M.D.O. is, they make you go through a process, and they will hope you'll back out and not do it, but-
On this side, going that route is, and you do have that on that. Now, the other side of it is, this gives the right way to the city, so the issues that you have as far as that goes. Another cost thing to talk about was the conduits that you got to pour across. We got a half a million dollars casings whenever we're having to go across on that one, so that's half a million that is ours that we don't normally do. So those, talking about the savings, it's in the millions to go that route, and then it also makes your utility project a lot more viable.
We'll look forward to, as you develop costs and things about.
On that one, and like I said, it's going to be an iterative process, get additional funding, say, okay, here's our budget, and try to figure out how to, how to get inside that budget.
And the first step is, is actually asking M.D.O. for that, so that's the only action item that's on the agenda for Tuesday night, so. Okay, any other questions, Mr. Williams?
So they'll be taking the right of way of Long Street and West Pope West Point.
Yes, yeah. And have you got a, do you have a picture of that entire length up there, Chris?
I do not.
Okay. All right, Joe, we have, do we have that on our, do we have that on our?
So it is, it's pretty much max meet market to Old West Point Road. You have the bridge, there's no bridges in that section, so thinking about the liabilities that you're taking on. We don't have any bridges, there's not anything along those lines. Your next bridge is the railroad bridge, a little bit east of there as far as that goes, and that was the discussion that has, like, if you were taking-
Still, M.D.O. still have it.
Yeah, well, we don't want to take on bridges.
Right, because if you did, then just like you're saying, you got that in perpetuity, then it's a, that's a lot to take on as far as that goes. It starts to make the life a lot different. So this is the overlay on that portion.
Thanks.
Okay, all right, nothing else? Just as Joel found it, so we can reference it if we need to.
But our Tuesday night, this will be, our resolution, proposed resolution would be for us to take the, to take the maintenance over.
To go to, to go to M.D.O. and ask-
Set M.D.O.'s, oh, go to M.D.O., not to, not to finally do it.
And ask them for permission to take care and maintenance of that, that portion of Highway 182 and have it come-
But if the numbers don't come back to something we can afford, we're still going to take it over.
Well, I still think it has value to us because that will let us put the water in the sewer in the street, and that way we've got some, when we do this, do this project, which I think we should do at least some pieces of this project, if we have to phase it in in some kind of way, then we will, we will have that option to, to work in those, in that right of way area that we don't right now currently have much of a way to do. In fact, Chris, one little, one last piece, the, the part of the constructability that you showed me, that, that in order just to get something in, I can't remember what it was, that you, we had to lay it back beyond the right of way, access beyond the right of way.
So we're talking about the jack and four situation-
Yeah, that's what it was.
-as everything's on those lines. So how deep everything is and trying to lay it back, just like the issue that you're talking about, the concrete road, was if you think some of this sewer is 15 feet deep, and so think about how wide the hole has to be at the top to get 15 feet deep on it, drainage is 11 feet deep, so by the time you lay that back to have that constructed, a good portion of that concrete is gone already, just from physical, what you have to go and do.
But you're also outside of the right of way, and we can't work outside the right of way because that's not what the project allows. So it puts us in a position to not be able to conceivably do things that are, that's what it was designed to do, so.
I'm surprised that the original scope of the work on, on the Bill Grant didn't include removal of that jointed concrete and you asphalt. When I first moved up here, that road was awful. I mean, it was awful, it stayed awful for a number of years. It finally got overlaid, because that's what we have now, but you give it another eight, 10 years, that, that thing will be, it'll be-
And they have, they do have in the plans showing how to redo those joints, so they did take that into consideration, and what they were trying to do is save as much of it, to try to save all the-
And just redo the joints, so.
Right, that's what they were trying to do.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Have a good trip.
At some point, you spend more trying to save something than you do-
And bulldoze it up and put new asphalt in that.
And that's kind of where we're at on some of the utilities, is we're kind of piecing it apart and keeping the little chunks of it here and there, and it would be cheaper from efficiency standpoint from the contractor and everything around to be able to just lay new and have it all the way new on that one.
Chris, thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. I appreciate your work. I would, I would be in a crazy bin if, if I had to go through that, those documents. No, don't even go there. Yeah, I know exactly what you were thinking. Don't even say that. All right, so, that being said, we can go through the, we go through the agenda now. We have three sets of minutes. Mr. Huskerson has looked at them, I believe, and they all look, they look appropriate, good to go? Can we put those on consent? Okay. Comments, I, we're going to ask, the chief is not here, but A.C. is, we're going to ask for Corporal Bibbs, who did an outstanding job on National Night Out, to come give us just a quick little presentation on some of the numbers associated. I think it was probably twice the size it was last year, it's been growing every year, it's huge participation. So I've asked them to do that, so that, and maybe some introductions. Mr. Ashford, do we have any introductions, maybe? We do not? Okay. So anything anyone wants to have on the agenda for comments? All right, seeing none of that, we've got no citizen, well, citizens' comments will be what they are, public appearance is none, public hearings, this will be the tax mileage, this will be our first one, the tax mileage and the budget, and we will just have a public hearing, just like we always do. Under Mayor's business, this is, this is $2 million that we received from the state, and this is just accepting that, or acknowledging, accepting that, which is a formality, right?
It's 100% appropriations, and it just, the MOU just states that we will do the required reporting and the maintenance.
Okay, all right, but it is, it does need to be on, adopted by the board, so. Can we do consent for that one? Okay. And then the other one is consideration of requesting the release for that portion of Highway 182. So are we ready to say consent for that one, or we want to wait?
I'm ready. What about you, Mel? Leave it open, man.
Okay, no problem. All right, community development, Mr. Havilland is in the corner over there. Anything in particular about this one, sir?
This is just a final platform for the cadence property that is part of the various of the bridge from last meeting, which is a platform that they wrapped up with the PRC for a minute.
Okay, all right, any issues with consent for that one? Okay. Under engineering, we've got selection of Burns Cooley Dennis for testing for the Niemour Center, and this is for an hourly, an hourly charge with a cost not to exceed, is that correct? Okay, it just reads a little thing.
Wonky.
Yeah, I don't want an hourly charge of $25,000 because if that's the business I want to get in, I can go back to school. So can we, Lisa, can we modify that language just a tad so that it's a little clearer?
I remember a good couple of times, I saw-
Yeah, there you go, thank you. All right. Consent for that one? Consideration of approving the proposal from Neil Schaefer for constructability, that was what Mr. Williams just mentioned about the design review for the Bill Grant. Would you consent for that one?
Consent.
Authorization to apply for the Transportation Alternatives Program, this is-
Can we, can we back up to that Neil Schaefer?
Sure.
Just so that everybody knows where the funding comes from for that, it would be ARPA funds and the Bill Grant monies that we set aside.
Yep, okay. And then the TAP grant, that would be a 20% match, and, and that's one of those things that we try to build in. We don't know exactly how much that match would be at this point because we don't know who's going to partner with us. 20% would be the maximum, obviously, but we also don't know what the cost would be because we haven't got it, got it that far along, so.
How much they'll give us.
Yeah.
This time it was much less.
Exactly. We, we asked for, I think, a million and a half or something like that, ended up with $400,000, so we could only do the intersection of Spring Street, so just the application to do it, we'll see what they end up giving us.
And, and this is one that, because it is a street project qualifies for use tax fund expenditures.
Right, so consent for that one?
Consent.
Okay. Okay. Then Neil Schaefer is a preferred consultant on the Safe Streets for All. And this one, I will, I will make a stab at it, but just so Mr. Burnett backs me up here. This is, this is one of those boxes, or Mr. Williams, one, this is one of those boxes we have to check in order to get, to become eligible for that, what is it, how many billions of dollars?
Five billion, billion for a year for projects.
Yeah. Of transportation dollars that we can leverage into other things. So this one has to be done for us to be able to be eligible for.
And at this point, this is no additional cash outlay to the city. The intended match initially will be in-kind services, which is an allowable match. Going forward, though, as, as we are successful in getting some of these grants, we'll have to talk about where the match money comes from.
Is that a 20% match for all of these or is it?
We hope to be able to part with the issue, join efforts and split it.
Okay.
And we probably could still use some in-kind services. But I would expect that shovel projects to be millions of dollars.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Consent for that one?
Consent.
Okay. All right. Let's get the claims docket. Acceptance of the July financial statements. That is usually consent-worthy. Anything on that one? And then budget adjustments? Anything that needs to be highlighted on those?
These are just the command or that in a year, maybe some office supply accounts are a little low or somewhere near high.
Okay. Nothing, nothing outside normal? Okay. All right. Consent for that one?
All reclassifications or recognition of grants, that sort of thing.
All right. And then truly just a, you know, check the box kind of thing, the city clerk for advertising for source of supply. So consent for that one. Fire Department, we've got a quote for repairs for Engine 5. Chief, anything you want to share with us on that one?
No, ma'am. It should be ready Tuesday. Of course, yesterday, we had another truck go down his way, so.
Okay. Is this, is this just kind of wear, normal wear and tear kind of stuff? Nothing out, out of the, out of the ordinary? Okay. Well, clearly, we need to get them fixed. So.
Considering Engine 5 as a sole source because it's the closest certified dealer and that will be in the unit.
Okay.
And then number two, that truck would consider an emergency repair because the brakes went out and they get towed.
Okay.
So it's the backup for the other truck.
Okay. So, but let's be clear. All of, all of our, our 1 through 4 stations are manned with, and they have appropriate equipment. Okay.
And this is why, why you haven't sold some of those trucks you have.
Okay. All right. Consent for that one?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Ashford, any of these not, well, with the exception of one, any of these not filled positions that are being filled?
No.
Or just vacant positions, I mean?
The vacant position being revealed is sub number four.
Okay. All right. So we have firefighters, entry-level firefighters. Consent for that one?
Consent.
Hiring temporary full-time deputy court clerk. Consent for that one?
Consent.
Authorization for part-time sanitation workers, full-time, part-time? Full-time, part-time? Part-time. Just part-time. I'm sorry. Consent for that one. And then we have the discipline as recommended by the fire chief. Consent. And then modifying the fiscal note for payroll human resources assistant position. What does that mean?
Originally, we had agreed on a 75-25 split.
Okay.
And so we changed it to 60-40.
Okay. So it's just how, how the payroll, or how the salary is split?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Consent for that. Approval of the promotion for Mr. Starks to rank sergeant in the fire department. So, okay, cool. Consent for that one? And then Parks, we have acceptance of the business and operating plan. That is what they presented to us on June 30. And so we have 60 days by contract to approve that. And so it's on the, on the agenda for that. I'm sorry. Yes. It's an acceptance, to accept that.
To accept the contract for the Parks Rec.
No, no, no. To accept the business plan that they presented to us.
But that doesn't, that's not a contractual agreement with, or is it contractual?
Yeah, it's part of the.
It states what, how we, how, how things will be billed and how we'll pay for stuff. I hadn't read the contract.
No, it is basically saying they're presenting to us their operating plan, the, the, the things that they did in the past year, kind of a recap of that, and then the plans that they have going forward for the coming year. So it's, it's that. So consent for that one? Okay. And it should be, it should be in your packet. Is it in the packet?
It is. Well, it's in the e-package.
Okay. All right. Okay. And this one is for the, the last piece of this, for the curtain installation, Mr. Doherty?
Yep.
There you are. Okay. Sorry. Hold on. Sister Uncle was hiding you. Okay. This is the last piece of that for allowing that curtain to function. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Consent for that one? And then the lowest quote for resurfacing outfield. What is, what is this one?
Top dressing. So all the outfield's at Cornerstone and where it's supposed to be top dressing by mall gets to make it to $5,000 limit. So we are.
Okay.
Ongoing maintenance.
Okay. All right. I just, I just didn't remember.
Well, we were trying to get ahead of it, but I couldn't go around the cornerstone.
Okay.
I'll be waiting on that support.
Okay. All right. Consent for that?
I reworded this motion for them because Parker is not 100% sure. But right now, they don't have the mason sand on site. They're not sure. Nobody would get it in the next six days. So they asked, like, go ahead and put on here to accept the next quote. So if they can't fulfill this quote, it already be lined up.
But we'd still be set to go? Okay. All right.
And then come back.
Okay. Consent for that one?
Consent.
Okay. Let's see. Utilities, we have, okay, this is the Eastly, who's here? Ah, Mary's here for that. Okay. This is, this is good news, guys. The Eastly Boulevard Water Association.
This is great news.
Yes, it is great news. We discovered over the last few months that they have a six-inch water line, which will handle our fire protection. So we are very glad to know that we can use their water lines. This is an agreement to allow us to use their water lines and the existing fire hydrants there that will keep us from having to lay fire protection water lines in annex territory. So this saves us, I think, probably a couple of million dollars or somewhere in that neighborhood from our costs that were anticipated for the annex territory. So they have gotten, their board, the Eastly Boulevard Water Association Board, has, has agreed with the contract that I sent them. It is in the packet. Burks blessed it. So it's just a matter of making sure the board is good with it. But there's absolutely nothing but an upside to this one, y'all. So the only obligation we have is if we use them and tear them up, we put them back in the ground. So that's, I think that's about as good a deal as we can get. So consent for that one?
Consent. This is in our package.
I'm sorry?
This is in our package anyway.
Yes. True. And work authorization from Clearwater for engineering contract services. Is that anything in particular?
That's our standing contract that we have with Clearwater. This is just approving their rate schedule.
Okay. All right. Consent for that. Approval of the general services contract from Cassidy to provide as-needed engineering contract services. And we do this a good bit. Cassidy's not a name that I recognize. Is that somebody we've used before?
Actually, we haven't used it before on anything, but it's the company that one of the employees used to work at. We actually interviewed them. We did our evaluations for the water, just to be more impressive what they showed us.
Okay. So we want to be able to do them on an as-needed basis. Any reasons for consent for that? And then last but not least, this is sole source quote for a meter only, and expensive meter it is. So only provider in the, in the area. All right. Consent for that one? All right. And then under executive session, which we obviously won't talk about right now, there'll be a, it's a sale or lease of property. So we'll talk about that in executive session on Tuesday night. So anything from anybody? Questions?
Mayor, can we talk about the budget just for a minute, don't we think? Because I think we need to discuss, I know there's a proposal for the, the public hearing for the 1.87 mills. And I just wanted to reiterate to the people, to folks in the room, and I guess people invited by, the impact of what TIFs on our, on our board, on our, on our revenue stream. We have Academy Sports, which is $135,000, is on board now. We expect the Triangle Mark Shopping Center to come on board, at least prorated, which would be half that, be $200,000. There's a new TIF on this shopping center down the corner. We probably didn't, this board probably approved that. It's down with not Nicholas, but another one. It's about $85,000, $86,000 that's going to come on board. And that's 421 in that, and they're, they're tipped at.
The only ones that are pending is the.
Academy?
No, the only ones that are pending. The others are things that are in place and have been funded, except for the Triangle Crossing, Aldi's Marshall Shopping Center. That's the one that will be coming on board. The only other TIF that's out there that this, this board or the previous board approved, but there doesn't seem to be any move toward doing anything that would, that would trigger a TIF with it, is the, what is the name these days? Parker McGill.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And that's about.
So no one TIFs down at Nicholas or any of that stuff?
They're already in place.
That are already done. Yeah.
It's not, it's not a new out, cash out.
They're in place or unlikely to materialize.
Yeah.
Well, thing I, I think I just wanted to explain, and I know that Academy Sports probably was a TIF that came on before, the previous board. But next, when the, the Triangle Mark's fully in place, vision divided, we're responsible for a whole year. That's $400,000 plus 135 at Academy Sports. That's 535,000. I mean, that's, that's 1.6 mills right there. So I guess what I'm saying is, a lot of what we're now scrambling for and having to raise taxes on is cash outlay that we're at debt service, that we're going to have. These TIFs will go 15 years. I mean, I'm 60, I'll be eight, three years old, a little bit longer when these TIFs are over. So these are long-term, expensive cash outlays from our general fund that we, and we scramble every year now to try to make our, you know, to make our ends meet. And we come down to the point where we've got to add a 1.85 mill, 1.87 mill increased to balance our budget or something. And in light of that, I looked at sales taxes starting this morning. I understand that the projection for that $9 million in sales tax, that's, that's correct. We don't need to project any more than $9 million because that's, our, our sales tax is down 4% in the month of June, 23 over 24. I mean, 22, 23, 22 is down 4%. If you factor inflation at 2%, we're down 6% in sales. So I guess what I'm saying is sales have flattened out. General sales have flattened out. Our hotel motel stuff's up, but that, it is, it's kind of climbed back up. But our food, I mean, our general retail stuff is not.
Can I, can I speak briefly to that? And you're, you're right in what you're saying there. Based on the reports that are available to the general public on the Mississippi Department of Revenue's website, and even the Department of Revenue will tell you they are not the most reliable of reports. The, the decrease in sales has been in our retail market. Our food and beverage is strong, continues to grow. The retail contraction that we've seen is probably pretty typical of what we see across the country as the extra dollars that were in people's pockets are no longer there from the government subsidies, as people have finished up projects where they were spending money rehabbing the kitchen or buying a new office chair or something during, during COVID. Now they're going out to eat and taking a vacation. So it's a, a spending pattern change that doesn't benefit us in retail sales. It does benefit us in the food and beverage side, which is good.
We'll get, if people stay in hotels and eat and rest, we'll get to 18% of the normal diverse enough of that. But what has slowed down is general retail sales. And it's not a trend in Mississippi to see towns going down. About some mixed bag, about 60% of towns in the state have seen upticks of about enough to cover inflation. So which means that they're, from, from 22 to 23, they flattened out on retail sales. And if there's any increase, all it is, is a 3% to 4%. But what we, what concerned me is, we've actually flat out gone down a little bit. So I don't know what's the particular cause of that.
I think overall is us being flat as opposed to going down. We're talking about one month, right?
Right. If you fact, right. But if you, and we've gone, we're up about 200,000 in sales tax from 22 to 23. So we're up from 8.7, 8.9 million in general sales tax, diversion stuff. So.
I think the moral of the story is quit behind stuff online, people, and go to the shops and buy locally. So.
But we hadn't seen yet, but what we will see some of is what retail people call cannibalization. And that is when, when we do get, start paying debt service on, on Triangle Mark, we will have people who shifted down there and buying groceries at a store without capturing tax and leaving the store without capturing tax. And the thing I would say is the next TIF folks have come along, the moral of this story is Walmart market out here, the neighborhood, small markets are calling, Asper TIF, and we turned it down. And within 30 days, they got a permit to build a store and we're capturing all that sales tax. And that's what we need to do the next time, is to take a deep breath and, and think, there's a pretty good probability that they're going to build this thing anyway. They, I don't blame them for coming and asking. I blame us for granting another big TIF to the next retail development company in Starville in a southeastern conference all the time. We're not, we're not a blighted town. We're not a place where you have to incentivize, should not have to incentivize retail development.
Alden Rock wanted to.
Yeah. I just wanted to tell you that I, I think the TIF we did for the Aldi thing was, was good. And I think Castleberry did a nice job with it. But I 100% agree with you that we did take each one at face value, one at a time, and not just give blanket, blanket tips.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to make sure you understood that's where I am with it.
Very good. Appreciate it.
I don't think that, I mean.
I'm not aware.
When we first did one, it was Middleton Marketplace. That was our very first. And then we went to the, we had the mill. That was our second. And those are all impactful projects that I don't think we have any regrets about. And there may be one out there that we might have thought, well, maybe not. But I think for the most part, we've gotten good value out of the ones that we've done.
But if we back out, look at 30,000 feet, and we understand that we are incentivizing, and when people, our board incentivizes, we are putting cash in the pockets of developers. In the Middleton Market, city and county's $8 million. And that's not money that the developer is borrowing that's going to pay back. That is, we're going to hand, us and the county, that developer, that amount of money to lower his capital cost. And we've done that several times in shopping center developments. And what I say is, if we put the brakes on some of that, we might not see the immediate effects of somebody buying and renovating a shopping center or building a shopping center. But this is still a high demand place. Check real estate out here. It's a place where people want to come and they're paying all kinds of money to live here. I don't think we should be doing what people had to do in South Central Los Angeles and places like that 34 years ago to incentivize development. We don't have that problem here. But it's gotten, it's gotten to a point where if they come here and they tell us it's going to be great, and we're going to like it a lot, they always have to build into a business model, a TIF. And we just got to be able to say, thank you. Build it if you can make, if you can make the numbers work. If they don't work, do something else or back up or wait until the, until the numbers will work.
And I agree. I get, but what I guess I'm saying is the ones that we have done, with maybe one exception, I think have all been good projects. And to go forward, I don't think anybody's out there just giving, throwing, throwing blanket tips at anybody. So I believe we've, believe we've captured what I think is the right approach. And I think you're, I think you're right in that sense. We need to look at each one of them. So.
You tell me, you tell me, we're all like, like, Mark Nicholas, we learn from that.
Yeah. Yeah. We did. We don't worry about it.
But Jennifer, let me say one other thing. I say, Jennifer Gregory came into our, and spoke in here one day about a year, year and a half ago. And she, I asked a question specifically, have we, are we capturing the grocery retail mark? Are we capturing? What, what's out there we're not capturing? She said, you're getting almost 100% of the potential grocery sales for the city of Starville. And so the, when Aldi opened, the only thing that could happen, will happen, when Castleberry's TIF goes on, comes on board, is if a person leaves Kroger or Walmart and comes down and shops at Aldi, we won't capture that property, our sales tax on it anymore. I don't agree with you. No, no, that is, no, we won't. No, I don't, well, I don't agree with you because I know folks in Columbus who are coming over just to shop at Aldi.
Yep. As opposed to going to.
Not in large numbers, Jeffrey. With that, that, because if you go look at the grocery, go, go look at grocery sales in Mississippi Department of Revenue, we didn't see a big jump in, when Aldi opened up. There's a lot of business went down the street. Maybe a few came over Columbus. But I guess what I'm saying is that it hadn't been, and there wasn't a lot of business out there for us to get. And those ones on big, going to that re.
Val is offline, though. So we've got one that is totally out of, out of the market.
The other, the other thing I'd say is, you both make valid points. But when those guys from Columbus come over and shop at Aldi's, odds are they're eating or buying gas or maybe, maybe doing some other shopping while they're here in town.
And those are not.
It will bear out. And if our retail sales go up and jump spike, I'll be wrong on that. But if they not, we're just swapping business from a, from a taxpaying store to a non-taxpaying store.
It's something to always be concerned about. Always be concerned about.
All right. Everybody? Anything else? All right. Thanks, everyone. Have a great weekend.
Three more weeks till football. Yay!